That first meeting when I'm like, "Look at the doors."
I got glasses that light up here and here for reading. We'll wear those.
You know, last year, I didn't get one.
Were you set upstairs?
Somebody stole them every time they were ready.
Really? Wow. That's sad.
I'm calling to order the monthly meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board of Tarpon Springs on July 20th, 2015 at 7:02 PM. And we'll start with the roll call of the present.
Mrs. Protos?
Here.
Mr. Parker? Mr. Carr? Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Gealuses? Ms. St. Arnold?
Here.
Mr. Hassy?
Here.
Chairman Vincent?
Here. We have a quorum. And we begin with the next item on the agenda, approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes to review and approve. Is there a motion? We'll take them one at a time.
One at a time.
I'll make a motion we approve the minutes of 4:20, 2015 as they stand.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, vote.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Hassy?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
The next set of minutes is from May 18th, 2015.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from 5:18, 2015 as they stand.
Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Hassy?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. And the third set is for June 15th, 2015.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for 6:15, 2015 as they stand.
Second.
Any discussion? Take a vote?
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Hassy?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
Yes. Next item on the agenda would be the quasi judicial announcement and squirreling in of speakers. Our attorney, Mr. Danielle.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to be clear, we have one quasi judicial proceeding, which is item number five on your agenda tonight. The application for the Comp Plan zoning amendment is a legislative process. So just to make that clear for yourselves and members of the audience. Quasi judicial proceeding is one where the board acts in a quasi judicial capacity. By law, it is the board's function at such a hearing to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented to it at the hearing, and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the city's Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The board may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues arising from the application in the applicable code sections. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the evidence demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, the board is required by law to find against the applicant. The parties to the hearing are the applicant and the city. The city is represented by city staff. There is an established procedure which will be followed at quasi judicial hearings. First, all witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying at such hearing must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will have an opportunity to cross-examine the city staff and any city witnesses. The applicant will then present its witnesses and evidence. The city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the board, a party's opening statement and presentation is limited to 10 minutes. At that point, we'll proceed to the public comment portion of the meeting. Members of the public opposing the application will be given the opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public opposing the application have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have the opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. During the public comment portion of the meeting, members of the public present at the hearing may donate their time to a speaker to extend that speaker's time, but in doing so, the person donating the time forfeits his or her right to speak. Each donation shall extend the speaker's time an additional two minutes, and in no event shall the speaker's time be extended beyond 10 minutes of total speaking time. Following public comment, the applicant and city staff will have an opportunity to present rebuttal evidence and make a closing argument or summary. The applicant will go first, followed by city staff. Absent unusual circumstances to be determined by the board, a party's closing summary and rebuttal evidence will be limited to 10 minutes each. Following this, the board will consider the matter. At this point, I would ask anyone who intends to testify on application number 15-61, Agenda Item Number Five tonight, to please stand and be sworn. Ask you to raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? At this juncture, I'd ask whether there are any conflicts of interest on the board, and whether we have any ex parte communications on the application. Ms. Protos?
I received a phone call, and I went out there on my own to look at the properties and the proximity of the condos on one side and the living condos on the opposite side. And I said, "I went out there on my own after some resident called and said, 'Can you please come and look before you make a decision on the board?'" And I have heard some comments that they are concerned about, and I will bring them before the board.
All right. Do you have any-
See if they can be remedied.
Okay. Do you have any questions about your ability to be fair and impartial in the application?
I think after my background, I will be fair and impartial.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item number four, application number 15-47. It's a comprehensive plan slant zoning amendment for Tarpon Turtle. The staff will begin with the staff report.
Thank you very much. The request is to amend the future land use designation from RM Residential Medium to CL Commercial Limited, and to amend the zoning designation from RM 15 Residential Multi-Family to WDDI, which is Waterfront Development District. There's one amendment to the application. DCA under the owner, which is Prend C, under the first application information, DCA LLC needs to be removed. They're actually not the owner. They're just the applicant. Is that correct? Okay, well, that was on the application. So that information will need to be changed on the application for the board hearing. So the applicant will be Tarpon Turtle? Okay. And with that, this is basically a group of lots that are adjacent to Tarpon Turtle, to the existing restaurant that's there, which is actually in the Waterfront Development District. It's also got a future land use designation of CL. That's an existing for the Turtle itself. The Turtle also has a couple of conditional uses and some other things that have been done over the years with that site to allow for development of that restaurant in its current configuration. Okay? These lots that are we're talking about tonight, basically, they are not completely contiguous. There's one lot that's contiguous to the actual Turtle site and their existing parking. Then there's a break, which is there's a parcel there that's actually owned by the Tennis and Sail Club, the condo association that is right behind. And then there's another two lots that they own just adjacent to that. Essentially, the area is very much a residential neighborhood with the exception of the Turtle. And at the very beginning of the street, there is a residential office building there that currently is vacant, that the Turtle actually has acquired. But that is the commercial that's in that area. It's the residential office complex and the Turtle. There is no other commercial in that area at this time. It's completely residential. It's two basically condo communities on either side of the street with some residential, single-family residential mixed in. That's the character of the community currently. Basically, the applicant has requested this so that they can expand their parking lot. However, this is just a land use change at this point. There is no site plan before you tonight. There is no way for us to hold them to that request. We are literally just looking at the zoning and the future land use at this point. Anything that they plan to do within that land use category would need to be consistent with what's allowed in the Comp Plan for the future land use designation, and what's allowed in the zoning category for waterfront development. Waterfront development is intended for a water-dependent and tourist-oriented type of development. Okay? So the Turtle is very consistent with what that land use category allows and what the zoning allows there. Them asking for this for parking is consistent with what's allowed in that district. Okay? However, the supplemental parking that will be discussed tonight, that is not the main focus of this. It's basically just, at this point, the change in the land use and the zoning. Okay? I just want to make that clear so that if we get into talking about parking lots, you understand that that's going to come forward at a later date, that site plan with whatever use that they plan to do. And it must be consistent at that time with whatever happens tonight with the change in the land use if you choose to support it. With that, basically, the major issue that's happening at this site is currently the Turtle is experiencing basically a rebirth, where they are actually becoming very successful, and it's become a viable concern again. That being the case, they are experiencing some issues with parking. What's happening is the parking of staff and of servers is happening on the street, leaving open the existing parking area for patrons to use. So it's creating basically a safety concern because while that roadway is wide enough, over long-term, having people park there and people walking along a roadway that doesn't currently have a sidewalk, there is no safety for pedestrian walking up and down that roadway. They're walking in the right-of-way, or they're walking in the dirt on these lots. Okay? So that being the case, there is a safety concern here with having that parking occurring. And in the off-chance that a patron can't get into the existing parking lot, they're walking from that street, from that street parking. That being the case, with the existing Turtle that's there and the expansion for allowing them to further develop this to address the safety concern that's currently happening on the street, staff is basically recommending approval of this change to address the concerns of the safety in that area and allow for that parking lot to come forward. I have limited concerns because of the extensive requirements that we have for board-approved site plans here, that you will be able to address any negative connotations that would come with a future application because you're going to actually be reviewing that site plan, whether it's consistent with the Land Development Code along with your staff, before it actually gets approved. It's not going directly to building permit from here. It's going to come through another planning process that's going to allow us to deal with the concerns that are out there. Again, the other thing, there's been some miscommunication, or people have thought that this was an expansion of the Turtle. The Turtle is not involved here, other than the fact that they own the property. The current business is what it is. It's got conditional approval for the number of seats that it's got conditional approval for. Anything that they would alter, they would have to come back through the process and amend that property as well. So what's happening here is just the land use change and the zoning change with future applications to allow for the developments that they want to do. At this point, I have had limited conversations with the applicant on what's actually going to happen on the Turtle. It's only been on these sites. And their intention is for parking to address the safety concerns that they are aware are out there. And with that, staff is recommending approval. There are no conditions. This is a future land use amendment. They're not really appropriate for conditions because it's basically a change. When we get to the site plan, we will have conditions on that approval. There is one letter in the file that's on the last page that I received from a concerned citizen, a resident of the area. I have had a couple of phone calls. People just trying to get information. I have had folks voice their objection to this going forward. But the only written communication I have is this particular letter. And with that, we're recommending approval, and I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions by the board members for the city staff?
Yes.
Ms. Protos?
With this change, in the future, if they were to sell this property and the new owners come back, can you elaborate to get on the tape? What can go there, other than a parking lot?
Correct.
I'd like to have that in the tape in the minutes.
Some of the other uses that can go there are retail business, would be the restaurant use that's currently on the adjacent property. You would be allowed to have warehousing. You would be allowed to have office buildings. You would be allowed to have a lot of different developments. Some of the things like warehousing, that type of thing with the size lot, that's not going to be feasible. But you could get another restaurant on that property. You could get another retail business on that property. You could get any of those types of uses that are allowed. Again, parking areas where it's just a parking area similar to what we have at the docks, those are allowed there as a use by right. They don't even need to be associated with the Turtle. They could just have a parking area there that's allowed in that zoning district because it's intended for tourist-oriented development. In this case, the only thing that is down there right now, other than the residential, is the Turtle. So that is the tourist destination in this particular case.
At this time?
At this time, correct.
All right. Could a nightclub or a bar go in there?
A bar could go in there. That's an eating or drinking establishment.
Bar, strictly a bar. What about a nightclub with fans?
Nightclub, it would be, it depends on the size that they actually need to get to make a viable business because nightclubs tend to have larger volume of traffic and those type of things. So it depends on how you configure those lots. Because of that inner broken lot that's in the middle, that's separate, that 50 by 100 lot that's owned by the Sail Club, it'd be very difficult to set the parking up that you would need for a nightclub and actually get the nightclub down there together. If it was a small one, yes.
Well, what are the rules or regulations with the police department on parking lots after 11 o'clock and people leaving the, I don't know how late they stay open. I have no idea. But if it's after 11, what recourse do the residents have for loud noise?
They would have to, under the noise ordinance, they could call and make a formal complaint, and then the officers would respond.
Okay, I just wanted to get that in the minutes so it'll be understood. Is the noise ordinance still at 11:00 P.M.?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
I have a question about, how long has the Turtle been in operation?
They would actually have to answer that because, being new to the community, I know it's been there for a significant amount of time, but I could not actually find the date in any of the records that we have.
Question, I guess I have, was it there before the condos were there?
Yes. I was about 20 years old when I was skiing there, right in front of it.
Excuse me. A Tarpon Tennis and Sail was there, and then they built the Turtle, but it wasn't the type, it was a little shack.
Yeah, the Tarpon Turtle had a little-
It wasn't what it is now.
No, it wasn't what it was, but it was the Tarpon Turtle. It was a little shack, had sandwiches and that kind of thing for the people who used the lake.
They didn't have any problems at that time with it.
We need to have one person talking at a time. Please, members of the board.
I'm sorry. Just correcting things.
We're still, any other questions for staff?
I do have a procedural question. Is it feasible, or is it necessary for the zoning and land use to be dealt with separately? Or could they be bringing us a site plan that shows the parking at the same time as this request to kind of address any concerns that something other than that might happen here?
They could bring the site plan forward at the same time with the zoning request. At this particular point, to spend the amount of money that you need to get an engineered site plan without knowing what the future land use is going to happen, this is not a guaranteed, you know, process we need to go through. And really, we need to look at the consistency as a board and a community and evaluate that it's consistent with our plan and what we want to see happen here in the future. So having them come through the process with a fully engineered site plan at this time without knowing that the land use is really, you know, a risk that they would have to take, but they certainly could bring a site plan forward with a zoning change.
Any other questions for the staff, by board members?
Not at this time.
Okay. I guess next we hear from the applicant, if the applicant is present.
Mr. Chairman, board members, my name is Todd Pressman, 334 East Lake Road, number 102 in Palm Harbor, Florida. We appreciate you being here this evening and to bring this request forward by the Tarpon Turtle. I am acting as agent for the request, and I did want to follow up on Heather's first comment to clarify the record that the only name under the owner and applicant should be the Tarpon Turtle LLC. So we appreciate her mentioning that and bringing that up front. I really would like to begin or move away from, or move forward from the staff report, which is a really good report, very detailed, goes into a lot of the good points in supporting this request. One major direction is that this request is really based upon continuing the forward positive movement of the site in terms of improvements, modifications, and changes to better suit the neighborhood, the business, and the city. And in that regard, who we have here this evening are four persons I'd like to introduce to you, and they'll have a couple of words for you. Terry Hunt. Terry is the president of TL Hunt Development Commercial Estate. He's the owner of United Business Parks. The newest one is in Oldsmar, if you've been down Tampa Road. Successful 23-acre office warehouse park. Terry retains 10 of his most recent development projects. He's been developing commercial projects for 30 years. Katie Goff. Katie is the executive vice president with Terry with TL Hunt, with five years in charge of daily activities. Also homeowner in the vicinity of the Tarpon Turtle. Eric and his wife Katie are owners of the actual business, operation of the business, with many years in the restaurant business, including the Peggy O'Neals in Palm Harbor, if you folks have been down there. Terry, did you want to say a few words and introduce yourself to the group? Yep. So if I may, Mr. Chairman, Terry will say a few words, and then I'd like to address the board in regard to the planning and zoning direct questions, if that's all right. Thank you.
That's fine. Please state your name and address when you arrive at the podium, sir.
My name is Terry Hunt. I live at 1955 North Highland Avenue in Tarpon Springs. The short and simple of this is property come across my radar screen when it was the shacks and the little restaurant and all that. And we weren't able to do anything with it at that point. And then when it got developed in 2006, a man ran that place that none of us particularly cared for, and it come across my radar screen again with him. And he was bankrupt. The bank that he was dealing with was taken over by FDIC in Texas. And about that time, Katie come to work for me, and we tried hard. And it was just a quagmire of bankruptcies, of political, legal stuff that you just could not touch. So we walked away from it. And then December of 13, a friend of mine suggested I take a look at it again, that the current operator had gotten it out of bankruptcy, so to speak. And we ended up buying it at that point. And didn't know quite what to do with it. But since 2006, as most of you know, it's just been a poorly-run operation. And I would go there as a customer, and I'd just roll my eyes. Katie built a house a block away, and we would meet there once in a while just to catch up for the day or whatever. And we'd just roll. I mean, it was just, they did not want boat traffic. They did not want lake traffic. It was just a sad, sad state of affairs. So we got it January of 2014. And Eric and I have been friends for at least 15 years, maybe longer than that, as time flies. I asked him if he'd take a run at it. And when we actually got possession out of it, Billy and that crew walked out of it December 17th. December 22nd, Eric and Katie and I signed a lease. And they're unbelievable experienced operators. And they run restaurants. They don't run bars. They don't run nightclubs. They run a full-blown restaurant. And I'm sure some of you've been there, and hopefully you've been a customer and had a lot of fun there. So we got it in our possession. And what I tell everybody, and this is hundreds of people, the Tarpon Turtle's been there since 1946. It's been there 69 years. And when Eric sat down in my office in Oldsmar, I said, "I got two requests, Eric. You can't change the name. It's been there for 69 years." And Terry, I can fix it. Don't worry about that. And I said, "Well, personally, I'd like to high-end Key West sports bar it because everybody that's gone to Key West has got a story, and it's usually fun and festive and that." And he agreed with me in seconds. So December 22nd, my construction company, his hard work, his wife's incredible hard work, and my, Katie, we all went to work. February 4th, it reopened. And it's just unbelievably successful in its own right. With Eric's, he'll come up and talk to him, and he's an award-winning chef. He runs it from the kitchen. And we don't want loud music. We don't want late nights. He closes every night at 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock, and they're out of there. So getting the waitstaff and the employees off of that brick road into some type of parking lot, and I look at it kind of like a church. It's only used Friday night, Saturday, and Sunday. It's, the rest of the week, they don't do enough business to maintain it. But one of the things with the employees parking on this brick road, the restaurant looks really busy. If you go by there right now, the employees are parked down there, and there's probably been 15 cars on a Monday night in the parking lot. So it's a little bit of a turn on the business side. But the safety side, and when I walked in there to pick these guys up, the girl behind the desk to seat you and stuff, she asked what we were doing. She goes, "Terry, I hate walking down there at 1:00 in the morning. I work. They all know we got money in our pockets. And I have to walk sometimes down there, and I don't want to walk by myself." So the combination of not using the street, the safety, we've talked about doing a turf parking lot, so it'll be just green grass. And I don't know the economics of that yet, but I'm- I'm sorry. We're enthused about it. We want to make the thing work, and thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Mr. Hunt, I want to tell you one thing.
I'm sorry?
The Tarpon Turtle is an asset in the area. And please don't get rid of that little gator because we come there on Fridays to eat after work, and we love to feed him bread and hamburger. Keep that little gator that comes up to the dock. Don't get rid of it.
The little beaver.
Yeah, I'm violating state laws. He's hungry. He has a fine feeding.
Ms. Chairman and board members, to orient you specifically to the request, and these are reductions of what's coming up. This is Tarpon Abu coming down. This is the restaurant located here. On one side, you have the aerial, and the aerial will show you the location of the restaurant and the roadway. On the other page, it'll show you where the current parking lot is and where the three small lots are noted here, here, and here that are before you tonight. And they are separated between the two here. So that's the specific request to you in terms of orienting to you the exact lots that are proposed. What we'd like to communicate to you is that on these several parcels, we again want to operate in a more positive manner and in compliance, which the restaurant has been doing. And the simple reason is to get the cars off the road. I want to let you know that we have reached out to many residents. We had one big meeting at the condo complex next door. I would suggest to you that was very, very great, majority positive. We then invited the residents to come over to the restaurant. Again, we had about 25, 30 people there. They were very positive as well in terms of getting this done and also trying to work towards some of their difficulties in parking. I do have a petition for you in support, which includes some of those residents. Heather, if I may ask you if you could pass that down as well? Thank you. We have had nothing but good support or response. Yes, we've had some folks who have concerns and questions, but we've sat down with everyone that has contacted us and walked through what's proposed. Two critical things. Number one, as Heather said, what you look at tonight will not allow an expansion of the restaurant or the number of seats in the restaurant. That's fixed. And she explained to you why that is. Secondly, in regard to the type of uses that could go there, these are very tight lots. If you're looking at a concern about major impacts of other types of uses, you're going to have to provide a structure. You're going to have to provide parking and retention. It simply will not work on these small types of lots. That's why we chose to move forward. We felt that we had a credible request without the site plan. Heather went into that some, and in her report, she notes the controls that you have over a site plan. So we felt, again, very comfortable in that regard. The bottom line for the request is, again, as the new management and new owners have come in, the restaurant's been one great. There's been no citations. There's been no complaints that we're aware of. And this is our next step to move forward to make the restaurant and the neighborhood work a little better. Katie also as well has reached out to some of the neighbors on the street and knocked on some of the doors, and we talked to a number of the neighbors in that regard as well. well. So in that retrospect, if there's any questions or concerns, we'll be happy to answer them for you.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
I have one. I'm assuming then you'll put a sidewalk in?
Yeah, I'm sure a sidewalk's going to be required. Yes, sir.
Okay, that's required?
They would have to put a sidewalk in, or they would have to request a waiver from that provision of the Land Development Code.
We love sidewalks.
That would be part of the site plan review process, correct?
That's correct, yes.
And in that process, of course, for the benefit of the board members and the public, at that point in time in the site plan review, we could recommend conditions of approval. Of course, we're only an advisory board to the Board of Commissioners. They're the ones that have the final say. Any other questions for the applicant? Ms. Protos?
It's not our place here to ask you or say do it, but when you have your site plan, come before the board, even though there's vegetation there and trees, show a little bit more, because I think that will also help with the cars parking there and the noise and the doors shutting, because that was the only concern that I had when I went out there. This noise is going to carry over, you know? And those things will help with it.
Any other questions of Mr. Pressman from the board?
Ms. Chairman, if I may, just in quick response to Ms. Protos, who's an icon according to the city. You'll note that there is a green buffering that's also located on the condo side as well, and of course, buffering's going to be required by the city in terms of the parking lot as well. Thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Pressman as the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Board members.
Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of the application? Any members of the public wish to speak in opposition to the application? Seeing none, I'll close the public portion of the hearing, and we'll go to board comments or discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the application 15-47 as it stands.
Second.
Motion and second for application 15-47, Tarpon Turtle, for approval. Discussion by the board. I'd like to, if no one else has something, my concern, and it might be directed to Mr. Daniels, our, the board's attorney, is on the, this is for an amendment to the comprehensive plan. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And I'm concerned, because the definition of the waterfront district, development district, and the code is the WDI, which is Waterfront Development District, is established to provide for tourist-oriented development adjacent to the Anklit River and Lake Tarpon waterfront. And my question is, here we have an intervening lot that's not a part of the application, and so I don't know if these other lots, the two lots furthest from the Tarpon Turtle, would be considered adjacent. And maybe it's just my misreading of that word, but, you know, that gives me a little bit of concern.
Yeah, I mean, the word adjacent can be interpreted in a number of different ways, but I would think in the specific context of this application, I would consider them adjacent. I think that a land use professional, I want to put words in Heather's mouth, would probably be considered adjacent, because they're, you know, in the context of this application, they're in service of, you know, that waterfront lot. I don't know that the smallest strip of land, you know, in the middle of them, so to speak, destroys that adjacent nature.
It almost would make that useless, that 50-foot lot now. You're going to have a parking lot on both sides of it. I mean, it's, that's too small for a business really to go in. It's going to be interesting to see what happens to that.
Oh, sorry.
Well, that small portion is not included. It's a 50-foot wide portion of land, if I remember the staff report right, and that is owned by the condominium, Tarpon Sail and Tennis Club Condominium. I don't, I'm not familiar with what the use or provision of that piece of property is for the condominium association, whether they use it for retention areas or if they need it or if they want it. You know, I have no idea. But I'm just, you know, looking at the, in the map here, and we've got this gap, and, you know, it's, it was just a concern, because I, certainly the other two lots are in the area and the vicinity. I mean, that's, there's no doubt about that, but it's just, you know, adjacent sounds like it means right next to, but, and so, but I'm not sure what the meaning is interpreted by the courts on these type of matters.
Good question.
I don't think there's any...
It's an excellent, it's an excellent question, and again, like I said, I think it's best, it's best received in context. I'm not sure that in the nature, you know, the applicant being on the lake, you know, looking to, looking for his zoning help or a comp plan amendment on lots that are, you know, I don't want to say close by, but I mean, you're parsing words. I understand what you mean by adjacent. It's a very, it's a very good observation. On the other hand, I don't think from a legal perspective, a court would quibble with the idea that those lots are adjacent and suitable for that district.
And related to my concern about that is the fact that we're talking about a mini in a land use map. And normally in land use comprehensive plan maps, you have an area designated for certain types of uses and various types of zoning. And here where we have sort of a gap in between, it seems like it's almost comparable to spot zoning, which I have a problem with spot zoning. Of course, this isn't a, we're not talking about that right now, I guess, but...
Yeah, I think that we, I think it'd be looked at frankly from a court perspective more in terms of the neighborhood rather than, you know, parcel by parcel. You're looking at a, at a, at a neighborhood, if you will, or an area that can be considered waterfront or adjacent to waterfront.
But if they came in with something else, that would be spot zoning.
I didn't hear you, Ms. Protos. I'm sorry.
If they came in on that strip, Chairman Vincent and the condo wanted to use it for something and have to have it rezoned, that would be spot zoning. In a sense, it would be, because it's between the other two lots.
If they're using it for drainage or they're using it for that kind of thing, they can't put anything on it anyway.
Before we get in a bind, too. I mean, it can happen. I don't know, you know, I don't know where their drainage would go between that, you know, and, I know, but when you look at it, we don't know.
Well, it's just a cause of...
I think it's certainly possible. It's hard to say without a present application before us. I mean, we're speculating what could happen, and certainly it could. Not really before us tonight.
Well, let me ask you this. Should we find out before we vote on it, or will we put our, the city in jeopardy if we vote on it and it can be spot zoning?
I don't perceive you putting any of the city in jeopardy at all with this application, one way or the other. If you find that it's inappropriate for change, I think you've got the evidence before you support it.
Hey, that's a hint. We have your opinion, all right?
Well, the advantage of being an advisory board, whatever we say isn't what's going to be determined in the end. It's what the City Commission votes on and passes or doesn't pass. And so it's our job to make a recommendation the best we can.
Understandable, but your question, which you brought up, was very good. There's been a motion and a second.
Right. I don't, I don't think there's a question about the importance of having the street opened up, you know, for safety issues and, you know, having a lot of on-street parking. I'm sure the neighbors don't like that anyway, as well as employees, but I'm just want to be sure that, you know, we're doing things the right way. Are there any other discussion items, any other discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we'll take a vote.
Mrs. Protos?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Hossi?
Yes.
Chairman Vincent?
No. All right, the item passes, and that will go on to the City Commission.
You know, you can ask the police to come out there at the closing time to patrol for your employees. That is an option you have. Yes, you should.
Thank you very much for coming. Next item on the agenda is item number five, application number 15-61, Innis Drive Site Plan. It's a site plan approval to subdivide an existing platted lot into four proposed lots. And we'll begin with the staff report.
Thank you. Basically, this property is located on the north terminus of Innis Drive. It's existing, it's an existing lot of record. They're asking, it's approximately 1.6 acres, more or less. It's an existing plating lot, essentially they're looking to replat. However, with the density increase, because this is a density increase, you're going from 1 to 4, it, our code requires them to come through the process and get a site plan approval. This project actually was submitted as a final plat back in February, but you never saw it. It didn't make it through TRC at that particular time, basically because it's not appropriate to come as a final plat. It needs to come through the full process. It needs to be, I recognize it's a small, it's a small subdivision, but it has to come through that, the formal process. So what you have before you is what they are proposing at this time. It will be, it's on an existing paved private easement. It's not, it's not a road there that goes through that property. There's an existing easement. To the south, there is lots that were previously subdivided out, and that easement at that time was utilized for that project. There will be water and sewer for this project. They will be required to put in some lift stations to get up to Innis Drive at the top of, at the top to actually get to the water and sewer, but they are planning on hooking to water and sewer. There is no planned improvements for drainage as part of this plan. At this particular time, the developer has made the assumption that they can get letters of no objection from SWF MUD and develop those individual lots. Whether or not that's something that SWF MUD's going to actually approve is something that we're going to have to deal with at construction drawing time. Essentially, they're making that provision that they won't need that, but that's something that the state agency will make their determination. They may also need a general permit to actually hook for the water and sewer because they have to extend lines. That's another thing that there's some contention between the developer on whether or not they will need that. Essentially, there are conditions in this application that basically say any state approvals that are required must be obtained. So they will need to get us a letter of no objection from SWF MUD or submit their drainage plan to SWF MUD for approval, and they will need to submit for a general permit through FDAP or any other agency that requires for the water and sewer, for the approvals of the construction of those extensions and lines. At this time, what you see before you is what I received, and I have about eight conditions that I basically placed on this. We're currently recommending approval based on the technical review team meeting that happened on July 9th, where this, this request received no objection to move forward. It was a completely, they needed a complete application. And the conditions that I have, staff is currently recommending approval, and the conditions are the developer's responsible for acquiring all other jurisdictional permits, approvals for the, for meeting the minimum criteria of the Land Development Code, that the site plan as condition demonstrates the required facilities and services will be provided or available at the prescribed level of standards concurrent with the impacts of the development and may be subject to Section 3. It shouldn't be of this resolution, but it'll be Section 3 of LDC. Section. During the term of the site plan approval, receiving a certificate of concurrence pursuant to Section 122200. If easements are to be relocated, please provide letters of no objection from the utilities. All utilities must be designed and approved by the City Utility Division. No on-street parking will be allowed on the existing right-of-way. Construction plans signed and sealed by a registered Florida engineer to, oh, excuse me, signed and sealed by a registered engineer licensed to practice in the state of Florida must be submitted within one year of the date of the final site plan approval. Approval of construction plans consistent with the approved site plan and the payment of all requisite fees attended to the project in accordance with the Land Development Code requirements. And the site plan shall expire within one year of the effective date unless an application has been filed for building permit. So those are the conditions that I'm currently recommending. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Questions for staff?
So in other words, this really isn't complete until they get all those permits?
Correct. But the, generally, the permits for SWF MUD are done at the time of the actual construction drawings submitted, which have not been submitted formally.
Then why is it here in front of us tonight? It's not complete. We should not have anything in front of us that's not complete, even with just getting approval and we're an advisory board. Everything should be intact when it comes here to this board.
I understand that this was what was submitted by the applicant, and I'm pushing it through the process to actually get them, him started. So at this point, any conditions that we want to put on this or ask for additional information, I would be glad to provide that information to the applicant.
So this should really be deferred till he has all his information in. He's asking us to make a recommendation on something that is not there for us to see. And I think there should be a rule, and there used to be one, that nothing would come before planning and zoning until it was complete. That's jumping the gun.
To go disagree?
Wrong.
I was a little confused when I first looked at the backup materials, because it looked to me like it was just approval of a subdivision plat, which usually comes before us, maybe it doesn't anymore.
No, it does.
Okay. And there, but with a site plan, of course, you know, we have a lot more that we'd need to look at as far as drainage, the utilities, and the location of those kind of things, and what's designed into the site. And I don't see that here. Well, I see some easements and that sort of thing for drainage, but I don't see anything about where the lift stations can be placed or placement of other utilities. Any of those items, I don't see on this, and so I was surprised. I thought you would just, you know, use the wrong terminology, calling it a site plan approval, because it looked to me just like a plat approval.
This was the applicant's request that it moved forward because it was never moved through the process in February. So I submitted things that we, I took what we had, and this is why I'm bringing it forward, because the applicant needs to be provided with direction on what needs to be included, because staff has given him that direction, and this is what's been submitted. So this is why we're here.
I would like to say that you as the director, right? That you have the right to tell them until you get everything in, I cannot take it before the board.
And I would be glad to do that.
You know, I'm going to make a statement here. I do feel uncomfortable about the Tarpon Turtle. I do, with that piece of land in between, and I congratulate you, understand...
Let's talk about that during, if it's about Tarpon Turtle.
No, and I, well, no, this is what I'm getting at.
Oh, okay.
And now we have this. We're going to have problems with the first one eventually. I'm not an expert, but I've seen it through the years. And I'm going to make a motion, and I may not get support of this, that this second one be deferred till they get all their proper information into us. They're asking us to make a recommendation on something that's unknown and could put us all in jeopardy and the city, and come back and say, "Well, you approved it, so I have a right to have it." I've seen it happen before, and that's wrong. That's wrong.
It's not time to make a motion yet.
No, I'm just making a statement, sir. Explain something. That's why I feel that it's wrong to bring anything to us if it's not complete. We had it with another development before you even came, and it kept coming back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And it's not right. It's not right. And I may be the only one that feels that way.
Any other questions for staff? Are there any comments from the public, either in favor of or in opposition to the application?
No one's here.
Had to ask.
I know.
Seeing none, the public portion of the meeting is closed, and now we'll move to, well, is there an applicant here?
Yeah, just so the record is clear, the applicant is not here, nor is anybody else.
Okay. I'm sorry, I should have asked for the applicant first. Okay, the applicant is not present, and the members of the public are not here to speak in favor of or in opposition. It's now open for board discussion or a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that this be deferred until we have all the proper information and the permits before us to go ahead with this development. We have nothing here. The applicant isn't here.
Let's just make the motion first, and we'll go in talking about the motion.
I know, well, I make a motion that we defer it till we get all the information and permits.
And since you're going to make a motion to defer, because this is the one that requires publication and notification to adjoining property owners, what we need to do is defer it to a date certain. Otherwise, we're going to need to go back through the... do is defer it to a date certain, otherwise, we're going to need to go back through the process again of notifying neighbors, et cetera, et cetera.
What do you suggest, September? October?
At this point, without the applicant being here, I can't speak to how long it's going to take them to put together a complete application.
Well, let's say October, August, September, before they get their permits, sixty days.
Well, let me suggest maybe make it to the next meeting to ask for a date certain, and the applicant...
Yeah, that's a safe way to go, if you defer to your next meeting.
Because if he's in a hurry to get moving, maybe he'll get his doctor's roll in a month, but if he doesn't have enough time, he can ask for another extension of...
Yeah, there's nothing to stop you from deferring it again, so long as the folks who, obviously there aren't any here, but you don't want to make the assumption that's going to be true again.
Well, I made, so October to give them enough time to do the paperwork, that was just why I mentioned that month.
Yeah, and that makes perfect sense. The flip side of that coin is the property owner may say, well, now I can't get heard again until October, but I can get my stuff done in two weeks. I don't know if that's so or not, I'm only saying, but if you pick October, you need to stick with October, you can't move it up. If you, if you pick a date closer and they're not done, you can just move to defer it again.
All right, let's say September, then, that gives them the whole month of August, this is towards the last of July.
All right, so that would be, your meeting in September is on the twenty-first.
And if he doesn't have it, then it doesn't, we'll just defer it till he gets it here to us.
Okay, just a moment, there's a motion on the floor to defer to September twenty-first meeting of the Planning and Zoning Board. Is there a second to the motion?
My second.
Mr. Hesse seconds the motion. Discussion on the motion.
If he doesn't have it in time, then bring it to us for deferment, and, you know, that's the only way to go. He has to have everything in order.
Any other discussion on the motion?
I mean, it's not complete, so we don't have the information to act on it.
Yeah, just to be clear, just so that there's, you know, there's a distinction between the application being complete and the application being well-supported such that it would pass either this board's approval or the approval of the Board of Commissioners. What we have here is a completed application, though it lacks sufficient information for you folks to vote on, so from a staff perspective, there really isn't a whole lot of choice other than to move it forward, the property owner has rights to have it heard. Now, you folks have made a very reasonable finding that you can't move forward on, it doesn't meet, well, it's given an opportunity to move forward, but from a staff perspective, their hands are, they have some discretion, but there comes a point when their hands are tied, they've got to bring, they've got to move the application forward one way or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Any other comments?
One, I'm quite surprised that he's not here. I'm also quite surprised that there are so many questions that need to be answered on this thing, that, I mean, they're just, it's so incomplete, really, that obviously they don't really care that much, or they're not very well...
Organized.
Organized.
I guess.
Or they're really not ready to go.
But, yeah, I...
Really not ready.
They're not ready.
They're not ready.
Any other comments before we take a vote? Take a vote now?
Mrs. Protos?
Motion is to defer till September twenty-one.
Yes, to defer.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. St. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Hesse?
Yes.
And Chairman Vincent?
Yes.
Do you want these packets back? Do you want these?
Nope. No one's here on to that, so you have record for when we move forward with them.
Okay, that concludes the number five. The next item on the agenda is number six, staff comments, Ms. Erwala.
I have no staff comments at this point.
Okay. Mr. Daniel?
None, sir.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is board comments, comments from the board.
I just have one comment, I will not be here at the September meeting.
Okay.
Be out of town.
Any other board comments? Hearing none? Any motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The meeting is now adjourned at seven fifty-five PM. Thank you.
All right.
I didn't expect it to be that quick. I thought we'd be late.
It's always been a problem.
But since it is just a development, yes.
Have we adjourned?
Yeah.
We did, we're adjourned, we're off, right? We give you the highest sign that we're off.
Oh, I don't know if, I don't know if the mics are off, we're adjourned.
That rumor's...
Please cut off the mics.
All right, I will not be here until...
It'll always be a restaurant or something.
Going to Portugal, are we off?
Gosh.
Going to Portugal.
Have fun.